Loving and gracious God, we praise and thank you for another day on this earth. Bless all of our endeavors, especially today's meeting, as we seek to do your will. Give us your grace so that we may effectively do our part as public servants and lead this district with confidence and unity. May your love surround us, your peace calm us, your shield protect us, and your wisdom guide us forever and always. We ask all of this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the religion which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin this meeting tonight, I would just like to remind everybody that there is an expectation of professionalism that is bestowed upon each of us as we sit at this table. Please be mindful of this as we interact tonight with the business concerning the board. Roll call.
This, Madam President, Mr. Wright?
Here.
Dr. Gia?
Here.
Ms. Babin?
Here.
Ms. Patita?
Here.
Mr. DuPlanus?
Here.
Ms. Bourgeois?
Here.
Ms. Marlborough?
Here.
Ms. Wells?
Here.
Item E, to receive a report of the LaFouche Parish Agriculture Extension Service.
Hi.
Aye.
Thank you, GoPro Parish Chair, Arianna Christian-Ayman for the LSU Ag Center. I'm here to introduce, we're gonna make this real short. I'm here to introduce a couple of new agents that we have got here through the past couple of years and I think the last time we came here, it was like after the summer last year, beginning of school year. So, we just want, I really want to introduce, in front of you is a quarterly report, all of our great bullet points and everything that we've been doing. My coworker, Christine Moyer, has done a bunch of nutrition classes at Lockport Lower, and it's really cool when like the kids go to their parent who works at the school system and is like, Mom, now I wanna eat the salad you're feeding me or the broccoli you gave me, or let's buy this new production. So that's really cool. We have Haley Gansel, who works Fisheries.
I was hiding behind that wall there. Thanks for the opportunity to just give a quick introduction. So my name is Haley, I work at the Ag Center. I'm an area agent for Fisheries and Coastal Issues. I also work for Louisiana Sea Grant, our main office is in Baton Rouge. So I do a lot of crawfish production, that's working with the crawfish producers, but I also have the opportunity to work with Louisiana Sea Grant's education and outreach team. So I just put together a grant to extend our coastal roots program in two LaFouche schools. I've been here about eight months, but also looking forward to getting integrated with some teachers in LaFouche as well as Terrebonne, which I cover, to do some more programming and some more activities that we have playing like wet the days and doing some environmental stewardship. Thanks.
We now have Suzanne Trossclaire, who is a fantastic 4H agent.
Hi, it's always good to be home. Thank you for having us. We have been blessed to be able to serve about a thousand students in LaFouche Parish, both in all of our public and our private schools within the parish, including e-learning and students who are members of ours, who are either homeschooled or possibly in vow throughout the parish. So thank you for the opportunity to continue to be in the schools. 4H is the biggest co-curricular club in the world. So we appreciate that opportunity to serve all of these students as we form them into global citizens. A couple of highlights of things that have happened recently, on April 22nd, Tybodale High School was able, was so gracious to host 4H's Achieva Day, which is our big contest day of the year, and hundreds of students go and compete for awards and honors, and we appreciate the ability to rotate that between Tybodale High School, Central LaFouche, and South LaFouche each year. We also have just finished up with our shooting sports program. We have about 150 students in LaFouche Parish in our shooting sports program, and the purpose is to develop them to be better marksmen and safe hunters and safe marksmen. That's the purpose of the program. We just received an NRA grant to help with that, to help with ammunition and supplies for students who cannot afford that, to forward our program. We have 56 students who qualified for regionals, 36 of those qualified for state, and we have a Central LaFouche student, Mr. Parker Rishoyd, who will be representing Louisiana at the National Shooting Sports Competition in the Brad Park. So kudos to him. And we appreciate all of you to support us in the parish.
It's really cool to see some 4H kids behind us receiving the awards and being awarded today. Randy Lynn Toots is our A and R agriculture and forage agent.
Hey, so my name is Randy Lynn Toots, like she said, I started back in July of 2021. So I've been with Ag Center for almost two years now. My main focus is with beef cattle and forage. In the past year, you know, we've done a master cattlemen program. I have some guys come and learn about every aspect of the business to be able to dive deeper into their cattle industry and expand their knowledge there. I'm also active in the LaFouche Cattlemen's Association. I cover Terrebonne as well as Assumption. We also just recently had a field day at Mr. Brad Pray Hall down in Lockport, which was really successful. Cattlemen were able to come, they have new drone technology that's coming out for cattlemen to be able to spray their pastures and being able to give demonstrations of what pesticides to use on certain weeds. Also, right when I started, it was right before Ida hit, so I had a lot of experience there, being able to facilitate, giving out donations to all of our producers right in the beginning. But I'm excited to keep working with producers and putting on educational programs for them and also helping out with 4H and other programs in the office. So, thank you.
Any questions? No regrets?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I don't know the other ladies, but I'm so glad to see Suzanne Trossclaire back. She was a dynamite 4H leader at Raceton Upper, so it's good to see her in that role at the top of the top.
In there, what, eight months that we've had? She's been a dynamite agent.
She had Raceton Upper walking with 4H.
Yeah, so we're excited to have her. Yes.
And Randy Lynn, her mom was a teacher in the district for many years, and she's a graduate of Central LaFouche High School. Yes, glad to see you, Mitch.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanna say, y'all are power players, 'cause especially getting out there with the cattle, and, 'cause we're considered minority when we're farmers in this industry. And I love it, because anytime I have a question, you guys have an answer, and if you don't have an answer, you make sure I get that answer. So y'all, these are some great ladies, they know what they're doing.
All right. Randy?
Thank you very much.
I have two awards and recognition. A, to recognize the schools selected as Louisiana Department of Education Comeback Campuses. Mr. Martin?
Just wait, I wanna stand up, 'cause I've got some stuff to give out. The Louisiana Department of Education is recognizing the impact educators have made with students despite facing extraordinary obstacles over the last two years, and we are honored to share that Galliano Elementary School is being recognized as a comeback campus. Where is Dr. Reagan-Lorraine? If you, if you don't know, Dr. Reagan-Lorraine's campus, you haven't imagined. Dr. Kate Brumley, the State Superintendent of Schools, actually came down and recognized Dr. Lorraine and her staff for the work that they've done. What this means is that a huge pandemic occurred, and kids have lost the ability to perform basic math and English, science and social studies. Her school is now performing at a level higher than before the pandemic, so it's a really big achievement. That's why it's called the Comeback Campus. Dr. Brumley came down and gave this award to her and her school. We wanted to recognize her and also acknowledge the fact that she is a semifinalist as a Principal of the Year for. I'm gonna keep saying, I'm gonna keep saying until it's no longer true.
Thank you.
So in keeping with this, the State of, State, the Department of Education is also acknowledging schools for being comeback campuses for subject specific. And with that, Louisiana has 155 schools that met the comeback campus designation in either ELA or MAT, and we are proud to share that Raceton Upper Elementary School is being recognized for math and the Virtual Academy of LaFouche for ELA. Congratulations. At least if we can get you over here. Adam, get you over to here and get the whole group in. And now there's the word for me. We did it. We're good, we're good. Let's get the four to the den.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. One, two, three. All right. Congratulations, both of you. Good job.
Item B, LaFouche Parish Food District Student, Staff, and Group Recognitions. Mr. Martin was back.
Okay, so another person that I feel like I've been talking about a whole lot lately. To be named as a school Student of the Year, really hard, almost impossible. Then you come to the parish level, and if you're named the Parish Student of the Year, oh my gosh, there's so many schools, and when you go to the state level and you win, it's really unheard of. She made me cry last time. Blake Lee Fagel, get up here. So after they take the picture, I'm gonna tell a story real quick. So if you don't know Ms. Sandy Holloway, she's a Bessie member from Tybodale. No, you're gonna stay up here. And so you've got these kids from all over Louisiana who are just the best and brightest kids from across the entire state. You've got, you know, Blake Lee and these other kids sitting down, and when they go to pronounce that she was a pageant winner from Geeens. Correct. But they pronounced it Geeens. Ms. Renee Mohammed realized it was about Blake Lee, so she starts jumping, and then of course, we miss Sandy Holloway, if y'all know Ms. Sandy, teaser, because she definitely left a little bit when Blake Lee won. Congratulations, Blake Lee, making it all over LaFouche Parish. Good job. In keeping with our award recognition, the next group of recognized students are elementary students. To list those students.
First.
Okay. I think he jumped, I think it's Mr. Del. Well then, I misspoke. Actually announce the names. The secondary? Middle? You know what, let's do it now. He's here, right? So, look, it's not on the agenda, introducing new administrators. Mr. Delcum just looked at me, he's like, Norman, Norman. It's not on the agenda, because it was, today was his first official day, but because of all the excellence that's happening at Raceton Upper Elementary School, we decided to steal one of their own and promote him to be the new principal at WS LaFouche. Mr. Norman Evans. Just say hi for now, 'cause you're coming back next month, you may have to tell. Okay, you have the next nominees, or?
Yeah, I got the, I got the names.
Okay.
Okay, so with the student recognitions beginning that tonight, the first student that we're gonna recognize this evening is a student from Tybodale High School who is a National Merit Scholarship finalist, and on top of that, she also found out today that through that program, she's also gonna be receiving an additional $2,000 scholarship to go to LSU, Ms. Grace Ridgeway. Okay, next student that we're recognizing, placed first in onsite painting at the Division One at the Louisiana State Beta Convention, from Central LaFouche High School, Aleah Wilkie. Next student, placed second place in the Louisiana 4H Commodity State Ambassador Contest for the Louisiana Crop Division One, from Raceton Upper Elementary School, Carter Gootrow. Our next student, placed first in the Economics Division Two at the State Social Studies Fair, from LaRose Cut Off Middle School, John Ryan Danos. Next, we have two students that placed at the FCC LA State Leadership Conference. The first student from Central LaFouche High School received gold, and that is Anthony Plazos. Next student, at the same conference, received silver, also from Central LaFouche High School, Sky Dig. The following students were all selected to the Louisiana High School Athletic Association's All Academic Composite Team, from South LaFouche High School in the Sport of Baseball, Connor Chasson. From South LaFouche High School in Tennis, Gavin Campo. From Tybodale High School in Track and Field, Marilyn Dupree. From South LaFouche High School in Soccer, Daniella Galicia. From South LaFouche High School in Tennis and Soccer, Ethan Gisclair. From South LaFouche High School in Soccer, Guadalupe Gonzalez. From Tybodale High School in Track and Field, Garrett Kramer. From Tybodale High School in Baseball, Owen Murillo. From South LaFouche High School in Soccer, Brayden Paredes. From South LaFouche High School in Soccer, Tennis, and Track, Brayden Paredes. From South LaFouche High School, also in Track, Ross Rodre. From South LaFouche High School in Soccer, Kylie Veeje.
All right, the next recognitions are being given for students who placed at the State Social Studies Fair. These are group recognitions. The first set of students from LaRose Cut Off Middle School placed first in the History Division Two, that is Michaela Benvenu and Noah Smith. From Galliano Elementary, second place in the Economics Division, Ace Alamon and Evan Barrios. From North LaRose Elementary, and third place in the Economics Division, is Adeline From South LaRose Elementary, in third place in the Anthropology Division, Zoe Kyles
These next students earned silver in the Professional Presentation Store Event Competition at the FCC LA State Leadership Conference, from, both from Central LaFouche High School, Bella Giordano and Olivia Chilton. And our final group, placed third in the Two-Dimensional Banner Design at the Louisiana State Beta Convention, these students are from Central LaFouche, Kate Degrees, Alyssa Crissoni, Blake Robert, and Isabella Handley.
Thank you enough for being here tonight. Kids, you are doing a phenomenal job. Keep up the good work, we're proud to have you in our school system. Parents, whatever you're doing, keep it up. What's amazing about the awards and recognitions that we're seeing here tonight is how well-rounded these kids are. They're not just performing academically, but through athletics, the arts, so many ways to be involved and a sort of part of what you're doing. Parents, we know what that means to be that involved, so thank you for what you're doing for allowing your kids to participate in this much. I know my parents would have never let me do that many things when I was that age, but it is not because they didn't love me, it's just a different time today. Look, it is time to go eat dinner. I think that you're owed a meal in the city of Tybodale. Don't go to Homa, it's a terrible place. And be safe on your way home. Thank y'all so much. Have a good one.
I would like to talk about the speciality that I feel that after it was cleared of why I left. Nobody directed anything. I'm trying to understand your reasoning of why. The committee went very well. I think that was my speciality debate.
Item three, approval of Board Consent Agenda. A, approval of Board Consent Agenda Items. B, minutes of regular board meetings held April 5th, 2023. C, observances at schools. Paint the Parish Purple Day, Friday, May 5th, 2023. And motion by Ms. Patita, a second by Ms. Wells. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Motion passes. Item four, approval of policy and academics committee recommendations as per meeting held April 19th, 2023. Dr. Gia?
To approve revisions to policy IVFAA, drug screening of student athletes, BC, board committees, BCBD, Agenda Preparation and Dissemination, BCBI, Public Participation. So move.
Motion by Dr. Gia, second by Mr. Wright. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Ms. Marlborough?
I have a question. How are we gonna do this? 'Cause there's four items stacked, and I have questions on that one. Is it gonna stop me and then come back and go again?
How are you gonna direct it? You have stacked four items. How about if we go ahead and start with the first, and then you can ask your questions on that one? And then we'll go ahead and see if there's any other comment, and we'll go to the next one.
So the IDFAA is, and Mr. Wright brought up a good point in committee about drug screening with people that have a prescription for medical marijuana, and we do know that it does help kids that have seizures, and we do know that it has a purpose. Our state makes it legal for that. And Mr. Martin wasn't here, because he was celebrating Ms. Blake Lee's big win, and I was wondering if that had gotten any more thought of what the answer would be to that.
If I'm correct, then, Mr. Delcum, you spoke on that item, right?
Was he only tested this morning?
Would you like to speak today? Would you like to?
Yeah, any, anytime a student tests positive for something that is, they're prescribed, we notify the parent, of course, anytime a student is positive for anything on one of these tests. But at that time, the parent would have an opportunity to provide documentation showing us that it is a prescription medication, and once we receive that documentation, the student is cleared, and they continue their participation.
Anyone else would like to comment on that item? Okay, the next one is BBC.
Okay, so bear with me, 'cause some of it's my view, and then some I kinda wanted to address away and try to maybe get y'all to think, 'cause some of you like to say this in the business meeting. So the first part of me is me, and the other one is more geared towards the business meeting. So the first part of me is me, and then the other one is more geared towards the business meeting perspective, so just hang tight. Tonight, with the proposed policies, the elected board members and the public would now have to go through the Advisory Committee made up of only three people, the President, the Vice President, and one board member, elected by the board to be able to place either one of the agenda. In our proposed policy BCBD, the board members are still subjected to A, B, and one through five. As it was debated in committee, the proposed policy was a reflection of what has been done for years prior to the change in November of 2022. And the last year, I have, as many of you that come to our meetings during the public, were told the public can only speak on actionable items, and meaning that was for a vote. In the policy BCBD, under Section B, number one and two, the wording "actionable jurisdiction" of the board is very concerning because it can allow the public and a board member to be circumvented if they want to place an informational item on the agenda. Meaning they can be told no because it has meant a vote, and that's, I'm going off of what was discussed in committee. And because it's not actionable. And so the public and the board member would not be able to have an agenda item put on because it's not falling into the criteria of one or two because it's not actionable. And I don't want that to become a problem where it's gonna be circumvented if someone feels they need to come, or I need to be able to say, my constituents want this on the agenda. Secondly, there's no appeals process for the board member at all, with no appeals discussion in front of the public of why the board members will not support it to be on the agenda and not, no vote on it. This alleviates accountability and transparency among the board members to their fellow board members and to the public that their fellow board members serve. Meaning if I wanted to bring it, and I wanna get on it because my constituents want it, and it's shot down, there is no recourse for me. It roads way further at public trust. And further that, it goes into saying, I guess this is where one might think that it's an appeals, but the Advisory Committee may be overruled should at least five board members request in writing that an item be placed on the agenda. This bothers me because five people make a quorum with a board of nine. Your elected official cannot lobby for themselves or for their constituents because by speaking to four of the board members can create a walking quorum. And that could lead to potential open media law violations because we're not discussing board business in front of the public in the event that it did get put on the agenda. Again, another way, in my opinion, to potentially silence a board member for making it look like there is some kind of policy there for appeals. In policy BCBD, it states in the first paragraph, "An agenda for all regular and special school board meetings, which shall be reviewed and approved by the President." It also states that the items subject to approval by the President are the consent agenda, committee reports, and items sought to be placed on the agenda by the superintendent related to the routine business and operations of the district. There are several things that I feel that are very wrong with this. One, the superintendent has no appeals process. More disturbing to me is the fact that this policy change, the superintendent does not have to jump through the same hoops that I and elected official do, and board members are technically the superintendent's boss. Why does the superintendent have a little more freedom than the board members? Why is the superintendent not subjected to the same scrutiny that the board members are? And why is it only being held to account to the President? Secondly, and the most concerning about the proposed policy BCBD is that the board president retains all the power over the agenda. It states committee reports, and by definition, committee reports are recommendations of what needs to be heard at the full board meeting, including the advisory committee's recommendations. So if by chance we make it out of committee to be placed on the agenda, the President wants to silence someone, the President can by not allowing the item on the agenda. It only gets worse if we look at BBC. In the first paragraph, the President retains the right to change committee membership. So despite the proposed change of the board electing a single member to the advisory committee, the President still retains the power to remove that person due to no changes in the opening paragraph and no addressing of this in the advisory committee definition and proposed policy BBC. So the President could stack the committee by making the board vote until the person the President wants is elected to the committee. With these policies, in my opinion, we're facing a dictatorship-style board, and as you can see, the President holds all the power. In policy BCBD, it states that a letter of denial would be sent, but nowhere does it say that you or I would get an explanation to why we are denied. But the denial letter will be a part of the record. Putting it on all record, including an explanation of why we are denied, brings accountability to the school district, to this board, and to the public. These policy changes will make it harder for the public's voice to be heard and the lack of transparency to be felt. To further the opinion, this is being done to silence people. Removing how to get on the agenda from policy labeled "public participation," which is BCBI, only a road's way at public trust because it makes this board look as if they are not wanting the public to participate by hiding the directions for this in policy BCBD, Agenda Preparation and Dissemination. And most people in the general public are not reading our entire policy, they're gonna look at public participation. To further this, the voicing of concerns about how the staff comes in early in the morning and how they are here for the duration of our board meetings was a justification on keeping the time at 6:00 PM for board meetings despite the working parent, taxpayer, stakeholder, and voter not able to attend the meeting or miss the opportunity to be heard because they do not get off work until 5:00 or 6:00 PM. Which makes it harder for them to be here, to see their children get an award, or equally as important, it may be the only time for them to speak on the record about something they feel strongly about and be a part of the process. It was my opinion then that the time change was done to silence parents and make it harder for them to be heard by adding another committee that has to be in the view of the public, requires the staff to be here even longer. Where is the thought about the staff now? Or is this just another way to potentially silence the public and now their elected officials to represent their views? And some have said that they will always be here for their constituents, and I have no doubts that we all will be. But do you think that just listening to them is going to solve the problem every time? One day you may have to take action on behalf of the people that you serve, and will you be controlled and censored by the dictatorship-style governing body that these policies will establish? Our liberties are at stake, democracy cannot flow if we're not having discussions, debates, and thoughtful conversations. If one person can control the entire content of what is discussed, that is not a democracy, that is a dictatorship. These policies will be the start of where democracy goes to die. I want my constituents to know that I do not believe that this board meeting is just a business meeting. I do not believe that your children are a commodity or dollars that drive the school district. This is an institution that has our children eight-plus hours a day, more waking hours than we do as parents. Those that believe this is a business, well, this business has great influence and what they're teaching and grooming our children in. Now, for those of you that believe this is a business meeting, this is my analogy for y'all. The service this business offers is education. The customer is the parent that enrolls their child in public school. The student is the commodity, the money, and the product. In business, there is risk and there is reward. Right now, this board is taking a risk by finding a way within the law to potentially silence the parents, stakeholders, and their elected officials. The way that I see it, the majority on this board have proven with the passing of the first changes to policy BCBD, the reward will outweigh the risk. And potentially silencing and censoring your customers on multiple levels will keep them happy and coming back. I don't know where the reward is. No one has said what the reward of the potential censoring and silencing of the board members and the public is. But have you thought about it this way? Currently, we are in an election year for the governor, state reps, and state senators. The current state legislature is a majority and a supermajority. HB 98 and HB 9 made it out of the Education Committee and are sitting in the House Appropriations Committee. This is one step closer to school choice. We have two strong candidates leading the polls for governor, and both are promising school choice. We have a presidential election in one year, and when candidate goes on, the motto, "Promise is made, promise is kept, and a promise he was not able to keep with school choice." If he's in the White House again, school choice is about on.
We're gonna ask that you go ahead and state on the item, please, as we're talking.
I am.
You have really kinda dived off of the item at the end.
Can I keep him up and explain? So, and again, another candidate is talking of dismantling the educational altogether. Where does this leave us as a school district? If our customers have options, they are no longer over financial barrel with, and those options are outside of our business. So do you think that by potentially silencing and censoring every level of voice they have makes them want to choose our service? Do you think that by making it harder for them to have a say or to hear our voices and opinions on the record, that the customer, AKA the parents, are going to keep the commodity, the money, AKA the children here? Are you really willing to risk that? Remember, the MFP is based on students enrolled in the district. Are you willing to take the risk, roll the dice, and drive down the funding that makes this district run? Currently, Louisiana is getting more money than most states per student, and we are failing our students, and you would be a fool to believe that the parents do not know this or see this by the product, AKA the student that is turned out. The parents' voices of wanting options is being heard and stepping closer to becoming reality. And now with Title IX by executive order, making it where if we take federal funds, which we do, what we have to allow, boys and girls sports, demeaning all the progress that the women's rights movements have made, it is putting our girls at risk all because of federal money. Roll this in, and will it lead to the boys and girls bathrooms? These are conversations we should be having on the record, and including those customers, AKA the parents that we serve. We should be wanting to hear what the public and the parents that we serve have to say on these things. That is the only way that we can let our lobbying group, LSBA, know what is best for the community we serve, and we cannot do that if we do not let the public or the elected official be heard on the record. Keep in mind, we do pay LSBA a lot of money to represent our values and beliefs, and that should be based off of the community standard. The risk is now outweighing the reward. School choice is possibly coming, and when it does, if the silencing and censorship continues, the one thing that the customer, AKA the parents, can do is remove their children from public school system, get the voucher that will provide state equivalent of the MFP money as the bill is currently written, and make sure we do not get a dime of that. If enough customers, AKA parents, have enough, they can serve it up to us by taking away that commodity that we need to run this school district. How many jobs would we have to cut, or would we need to freeze raises again? We know the road that has taken us down, the poaching of our teachers to other districts, and us being in a bind. Would we have to start asking parents to provide more money than we already do for many of the extracurriculars or supplies? The cost would get passed on to the customer, AKA the parent or taxpayer. Worst-case scenario, are we heading towards Chapter Seven or Eleven if enough kids leave? By passing this policy, you're setting the stage for your customers. You're creating a brand for this school district, and is this dictatorship-style the brand that will bring the customer, sustain the customer in the long run, and keep the money here for this business? You are setting the stage. Choose wisely, and remember that by playing the game, you are being played rather than paving the way for the people you are elected to serve. I'm asking that the proposed policies, BBCBD and BCBI, be tabled so that the author of this policy can work with me to amend these areas. BBC needs to state in the first paragraph, "And the President shall be given the option to change committee membership with the exception of the Advisory Committee." Policy BCBD, the wording "actionable" needs to be removed. Policy BCBD needs to have an appeals process that goes to the entire board for discussion and vote. This will alleviate a possible open medians law violation, and that was the advice heard of the DA and Mr. Amady when I called this after him. BCBI to reflect the changes to BCBD and in the spirit of transparency. So just keeps it there to let the public know, hey, this is how you do it, these are the rules, this is what we've established, so we're very transparent. And I move to motion for this to be tabled.
Hey, I have a motion to table an item. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Motion dies. So let's go back and let's look at what we're looking at. I'm gonna read the motion. Well, Dr. Gia, would you like to read the motion?
Uh, to approve revisions to policy IVFAA, drug screening of student athletes, BBC Board Committees, BCBD Agenda Preparation and Dissemination, BCBI Public Participation. And again, I believe we have a...
We have a motion, and I'll give the Gia, we have a second by Mr. Wright. Any further board discussion? If not, we'll vote. No, thank you. Motion passes. Just left the item.
Madam President, with the approval of board committees, I believe it's in line at this point to hold the ballot and vote on the headquarter member as a statement within the policy that approved the approach.
Yes, sir. So...
Would that happen to be all of us in agreement? Because at this moment?
By approving the policy, we have now voted.
There was a board, with the policy, once approved, states that you then must elect a board member to service the third member of the advisory committee. So by doing that, that would be in line with the recommendation of the committee to essentially adopt that policy. It would have been presumptive to put that as a separate agenda item because you first have to approve the change in the policy itself. So I think this is in line with what you have just approved by adopting that policy to then elect a committee member to service the third advisory committee member. So for the board...
Yes, sir.
Are we nominating individuals?
Yes, we will open, that's what my next statement is. We'll open nominations for the third member at large. Ms. Wells?
Raise nominee.
Yes.
I would like to nominate Ms. Buffy with Sharpton.
Ms. Sharpton, too?
A second. Yes, I get second.
We're just gonna go ahead, we're gonna ask for nominations three times. So any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, so...
Remove that nominations before?
We'll go ahead and close nominations, and you have all been provided a call word. Since we only have one person running, we don't have to vote, so...
My course, ma'am.
You're gonna be the newly elected member at large to the advisory committee. Thank you very much. All right.
Congratulations, ma'am.
And just as a point of information, the board is a committee, is the President, the Vice President, and the member at large.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go ahead and continue with our agenda. Item five, approval of business committee recommendations as per meeting held April 19th, 2023. Ms. Fertitta?
A, to approve with respect to adopting a resolution canvassing the returns and declaring the results of special elections valid in the Parish of LaFouche, State of Louisiana, to authorize the levy of sales and use tax therein and consolidate the school district number one of LaFouche Parish, State of Louisiana, to authorize the rededication and extension of an ad, an ad-adward tax therein on Saturday, March 25th, 2023, so moved.
Motion by Ms. Fertitta, seconded by Dr. Gia. Any public comment? Any board discussion? If not, let's vote. Motion pass, passes.
B, to approve with respect to adopting an ordinance providing for the levy within the Parish of LaFouche, State of Louisiana, of a .40% sales and use tax for the purpose such tax having been authorized at a special election held in the parish on Saturday, March 25th, 2023, so moved.
Motion by Ms. Fertitta, seconded by Ms. Bourgeois. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes.
C, to approve a millage rate resolution for rates that apply for the 2023 assessed rolls and take appropriate action, so moved.
Motion by Ms. Fertitta, seconded by Mr. D'Antonis. Mr. Martin, would you speak on this one?
Yes, Madam President, I must read this resolution to the board. Be resolved that the following millages are hereby levied in the 2023 tax bowl and all property subject to taxation by LaFouche Parish School Board. Constitutional, Millage 3.63, Millage Key 1047062. Air Conditioning and Maintenance, 7.49 mils, Millage Key 1047070. Retirement Obligations, 2 mils, Millage Key 1047097. Safety, 4 mils, Millage Key 1047099. General Maintenance, 7.49 mils, Millage Key 1047063. Salary Supplement, Millage Rate, 7.49 mils, Millage Key 1047069. Debt Service, Millage Rate, 12.1 mils. January 21, 2007 Proposition, Millage Key 1047068. April 21, 2012 Proposition, Millage Key 1047096. April 29, 2017 Proposition, Millage Key 1047100. Be it further resolved that the proper administrative officials of the Parish of LaFouche, State of Louisiana, be and they are hereby empowered, authorized, and directed to spread said taxes as herein above set forth upon the assessment goal of said parish for the year 2023, and to make the collection of taxes imposed for and on behalf of the taxing authority according to law, and that the taxes herein levied shall become a permanent lien and privilege on all property subject to taxation as herein set forth, and collection thereof shall be enforceable in the manner provided by law.
Any public comment? Any board discussion?
I just wanna say that the first, under debt service, I don't know if it makes a difference because they're J or T first. It should be July.
It does make a difference, it's not the same. July 21, 72120.
Thank you, sir. Any further board comment? Any further board comment? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes.
D, to approve the job description of Indian Ed Cultural Support Resource Position.
So moved. Motion by Ms. Fertitta, seconded by Ms. Wells. Any public comment? Any board discussion?
You say, I'm going to call out Ms. Brenda Robishow. Now, you know you have to get up here. So this job description was developed to outline job duties for contracted individuals through the Indian Ed grant. So many of these individuals are elders in the Native American community. And so they do activities such as regalia making, jewelry making, art, things like that. So Ms. Brenda Robishow can speak to that much better than I.
All right. Thank you. Brenda Dr. Robishow, part four sixteen, Highway one, Racine, Louisiana. Thank you for allowing me to come and address the board with this so important issue for our students. Indian education works quite closely with our tribal elders. They have a knowledge that is really important to be taught to our youth, whether it's through summer camp or parent meetings or just whatever gatherings that we have. So some of the things that they'll teach is, if they're teaching deed work, they're teaching math. They're teaching traditional medicine, the way our elders healed a long time ago, our treters. They're teaching science. And so it goes on and on, right? All the traditions are taught in the academic realm. And so our elders, as I had shared previously, did not have an opportunity to receive an education. A lot of our elders have a seventh grade education, if any education at all. So when it came time to being able to employ them for teaching at our camp, they didn't meet the qualifications. They didn't meet the job description as it was written. And so working with Ms. Jimmy here and others, we formed a committee and how we could address that because the information that they share with our students is just invaluable. And so we're really fortunate that this job description was brought before committee and it passed, and now it's becoming before you to be able to approve so that way we can make sure that all of our traditional knowledge is passed on to our children and that we can compensate our elders for coming and sharing that knowledge with us.
And one more thing I would like to add is, in the Indian Ed Grant, the mandate is for delegates to provide both academic and cultural opportunities and experiences to those students who qualify as Indian Ed. And so when you write that grant and it's funded, it's funded for both aspects. So that's what Ms. Brenda's speaking to, and all of this is through that grant. So we ask that it be approved. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any further board discussion? For the Dr. Copacabana, seven, smaller. Okay. Why don't we just go around the table? So we go ahead and start.
So I just have a question. So this is multiple positions or a position?
It's not actually a position. So we contract individuals through the grant for specific events. So it's not a part-time position. It's not a full-time position. It's an ancillary contract.
So it could be any number, right?
Yes, sir.
Whatever fits our need.
Whatever the event is focused on, whether it be regalia or what have you, we would seek out a cultural expert in that area and contract them to present that.
Because I was thinking, one person may not know.
Correct. Correct. And it's, in addition, it's a wonderful thing to see the elders of the community with the younger generation. It's very powerful.
Thank you.
Ms. Fertitta?
I just want to applaud the program because it is so important for you to continue teaching your culture to the young people. And besides that, it gives the seniors a chance to feel needed and a chance to keep them busy. We know what happens to a culture when people don't pass it on to their children. So congratulations to you.
I'd like to thank Ms. Brenda for volunteering her personal phone number to Ms. Jimmy. Having on speed out here. Because I do look at you as one of the elders. Not necessarily get the age, but just to say, Ms. Marion, yeah. Thank you very much for your service to the Indian education and to LaFouche Parish.
Ms. Boujou?
I look at it as like a consultant, teaching, a teaching consultant. So I'm very happy with the program in the way the guys do that.
Ms. Malra?
I'm not sure if any, I mean, I think we're going around. I see they're, we're like the three moms. So we have kids in the school system. That's why I don't know if their kids are a part of Indian Ed, but my children are. And I know when Ms. Greta was there, I'm not Native American. My husband is. So my children are far, and he worked. So I had to go to the meetings and learn. And they were grateful, I was so grateful because they taught me what I needed to teach my children. And I'm excited for this because I want to see it grow, grow, grow because I enjoyed it when it was really pumping before the pandemic, and I'm hoping we can get back to those big numbers again, and I'm very excited, so.
Yeah, I would just like to say, I love this program as well. I'm not Native American. I can remember being in elementary school and having Ms. Cody coming pull the kids out for things and me being jealous because they get to be pulled out and seeing all the tribal dances and all. So I think it's great that this program has gone this long and is still thriving. Thank you.
Ms. Sharpton?
I just wanted to express my appreciation for everyone's hard work in compiling the job description in the way that it's written because allowing those elders who do not have formal education but have that wealth of knowledge, they're not only educating the students in the Indian education program, but they're educating those who are going to carry on those traditions, who may not have the firsthand knowledge as the elders did. They're learning it from those people just as our students are, and it's going to be on their shoulders to carry on those traditions further. So I think that this education that's being offered by the elders who may not be educated according to a textbook, they have such a wealth of knowledge, and the education is going to be twofold to the adults who are going to carry on as well as the children who are learning. So thanks to Ms. Jimmy, to Ms. Brenda, and to Batteau who did this.
And I would just like to add, as an educator, education comes in so many different forms and so many different ways. It's always great when we see you here. Thank you for everything you do, and we really do appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Any further board comment?
I'm sorry. I'll look at Ms. Val and then I'll go over here. She's important. I just voted, sir.
If not, we'll go ahead and vote. Motion passes.
Letter E, to, oh, excuse me, letter E.
India.
To approve the American Integration Contractors' proposal for a new cloud-based security camera system.
So moved. Motion by Ms. Fertitta, seconded by Ms. Sharpton. Any public comment? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes.
Letter F, to approve the maintenance and support plan proposed by American Integration Contractors for video surveillance cameras and access controls.
So moved. Motion by Ms. Fertitta, seconded by Ms. Boujou. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes.
Letter G, approve advertisement for bids through the purchasing department for frequently purchased supplies for the upcoming 2023, 2024 fiscal year and take appropriate actions.
So moved. Motion by Ms. Fertitta, seconded by Mr. Wright. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes.
Letter H, to approve the proposal of Postaway and Neverville for the external auditing services for fiscal years 2023, 2024, and 2025.
So moved. Motion by Ms. Fertitta, seconded by Dr. Giott. Any public comment? Any board discussion? We'll vote. Motion passes.
A, to approve the proposals for the Student Information Management System and Assessment Platform.
So moved. Motion by Ms. Fertitta, seconded by Ms. Wells. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Ms. Fertitta?
I just wanted to say that, especially for those people who didn't do any of our committee meetings, that this was all discussed thoroughly. So here, you know, it seems like we're just saying yes, 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 but everybody has a lot of knowledge of what all these items mean.
Thank you. Ms. Malra?
Okay, so yesterday, the JPM vendors came and talked to us because they were at the LSBA thing yesterday that Ms. Fertitta and I attended. And they kind of told me some stuff that I don't know if Mr. Danny and all had discussed, but part of what they said to me that concerned me was that one of the programs that, I believe the ones that they're looking at going to, lost TOPS money for students. And that's extremely concerning to me, and I think it should be concerning to this board as well. And then they told me the parishes that had this program for two years, the districts, and changed back to JPMs. And I went and spoke to those board members and asked them what their consensus was on it. And what I gathered was the elementary level loved this program. And the high school level wanted to stay with JPMs because it was easier for the high school level. And I feel that what was said to me, I mean, needs to be looked at instead of passing something and going forward with it because if a student earned fifty thousand dollars in TOPS and their GPA from one group was not put in correctly, that could mean they lose their TOPS money, and we don't want to do that to somebody. And my understanding is JPMs has worked with the state for years versus this other group that's been here just a short period of time, so they kind of know. So that's why some school districts that I did speak with went and did a split type thing where they went with one, with JPMs, and encores. That way it was best of both worlds depending upon if it's like K through five and six or twelve. So I'm hoping either we can table this and go back and look at what's going on, and our IT department can go in and ask those questions of these companies and figure out what is in the best interest. I understand sometimes we're driven by if it's less expensive, but sometimes less expensive doesn't always mean it's the best product. And can go in and ask these questions of these companies and get those answers because I don't want anybody to lose out on anything that they worked very hard for. And I don't want it to reflect poorly on us.
So I have a motion to table the item. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Ms. Fertitta. So you have a motion to table the item. So we have to go ahead and do a hand vote to table?
You would? You would have to.
Right. Okay. Okay, all right. So any public comment on tabling the item? Any board discussion on tabling the item?
As well. Say something maybe not related to tabling. But when they had talked about JPMs, JPMs is not the dual, like, testing as well. And that was why they were going to a different program to combine the two. The teachers that I've spoken to, especially in elementary school, the lower grades, they're having to input grades like three different times. And so by going to the J, by doing with JPMs and eliminate and getting one encores that provides both together, it was very helpful.
That's why I was asking for the tables so that they can go back and review it because the districts I did talk to that ended up leaving encores and going back to JPMs two years after they were in contact with encores, said it was because they ended up keeping encores for elementary, like you're saying. Because elementary was where the one district I spoke to said that they really liked encores because of what you're saying. But she said on the other side of it, when we get into like six through twelve, and especially in the high school levels, that JPMs was better. And JPMs did not have a history of losing TOPS money. And that's very concerning when we go into our high school years with our students. Parents shouldn't, you know, most parents don't know how TOPS works and doesn't know how this stuff is put in. And if it gets messed up, muddled during an IT talk, that's why I was asking the table to state if Mr. Danny could look into those concerns and get back to us. But I would be very concerned if a student, their GPA was messed up when it got put in because of something with the system and they lose their TOPS. And so that's the only reason. If I would have never heard that, I probably would have been just fine, but then this is a reason for concern. And I did not know this in committee. I just learned this yesterday.
I'm going to go ahead and few dollars along and take delivery to go ahead and ask Mr. Chovan and Ms. McCarthy if they would like to speak on this item?
Yes.
At least through the, if you could explain the process you went through, how you evaluated these companies, what the methodology imposed was. Ms. Perk, let's see you hiding. You can come join the conversation as well. So Katie, why don't you take a...
Okay, so hi, I'm Katie McCarthy. For those of you who do not know me, I'm recently, probably, I haven't even been in this job a full year yet. I am the Instructional Technology Coordinator. And this was actually one of the very first things that was given to me is to begin to kind of look for a system that works well together. So our goal was to find a student information system, an assessment platform that was unified, easy to use for all of our stakeholders, parents, teachers, administrators. So our RFP outlined the mandatory and desired features and functions, and it included a functionality checklist that was very deep. It had eleven tabs of information from, it ran the gamut. So each of the vendors who submitted had to self-assess themselves on whether they could complete those functions that were either mandatory or desired. Five vendors submitted an RFP. One was excused because they could not perform the scope of work. Four vendors were then asked to demonstrate their product to a panel of a committee of educators. So product demonstrations were held. Each vendor demonstrated a series of scenarios, and we were allowed to see the capabilities of that software. One vendor was not able to demonstrate a functional assessment system as it was still under development, and what they did show us was not to the level of what we are used to now. So the committee then eliminated that vendor from the evaluation at that point. Three vendors were able to demonstrate a full product and were sent further questions beyond that initial functionality checklist and RFP regarding further functionality, further specific aspects regarding reporting, communication, and assessment. All of the committee members were allowed basic software access for each vendor for a trial. So we were able to go in and try the products out. After reviewing the questions that the vendors sent back, those three vendors sent back, and assembling the software, we took the following actions. We eliminated one vendor due to their lack of familiarity with Louisiana state requirements and state standards. We eliminated another vendor based on two factors. The hands-on trial of the software, which proved to be less user-friendly than any of the others, and the cost of the software itself. It was rather exorbitant. After that, we asked further questions of the final vendor, which were very extremely focused for these state reporting, special reporting, to, and to clarify all of those very nitpicky things that we depend on in our school system. And so therefore, that's why we recommend encores. We have done our due diligence. And we believe that it can provide the most unified and user-friendly solution. I think it fits, I think it fits the goal.
Hang on a second, please.
Did that due diligence include talking to other districts that had used?
Yes.
Can you speak to that?
Kristy, can, would you speak to, speaking with... Kristi, can, would you speak to, speaking with other districts because you have the better relationship?
I reached out to the particular district that Ms. Lawber was referencing. They were with On Course for four years before they left and returned to Edgear. They had a change in leadership, a new superintendent, and that's what spurred the return to Edgear more than anything else. They also were with that software company at its very beginning in Louisiana, and so it was not a very well-developed product at that point. It is now a substantially better product. I've spoken to Bossier, who was the first district that On Course went with when they came to Louisiana, and Bossier is one of their driving parishes in developing their product. I've been very impressed with it. We've spoken to, forgive me, I'm going to say the wrong direction, but East Baton Rouge?
West.
Flip the coin. They also are an On Course district, and they have been very pleased with their assessment as well as their student information system. Outside of that, I would like to say that I handle student records for the district. I'm the one that reports transcripts to the state for the, among other things, TOPS money. That is a system that while it is based from our student information system, is verified outside of it. So, if a district lost TOPS money, that's on the district, not the software. We check that very, very carefully.
Can you also speak to the difference now because the testing platform will be the recording platform for the grade, what that means for a teacher and how this change impacts them?
Okay, so this is, this is where some magic happens. Because the system is unified, and guys, I'm very, I'm out of the classroom just a couple of years, so I still know what it's like to be in the classroom and be a teacher. So, because the assessment platform, which we run all of our district assessments through, because it's unified with the student information system, it's graded, and all the teachers have to do is verify and push a button, publish to grade book, and it's there. So, it's, it's going to, it's going to give teachers time. It really, and that was kind of our driving factor is we want to make sure that we have a product that is good for our teachers, but it's good for all of our stakeholders as well. Ease of use for parents, being able to look at grades is going to be, it's going to be game-changing.
Excellent. Thank you so very much. Okay, so for the discussion, I just wanted to remind the board that you can second, second something without actually, you know, you just want to open up discussion right by the entire board. So, I just wanted to remind you that it's not necessarily that you approve of it, but you want to discuss it. Thank you. Hang on one second because you already have to turn the talk. Does anyone else would like to speak before? Ms. Charpentier?
I would just like to say that I feel more comfortable hearing directly from Ms. Katie, and Mr. Martin and I had a conversation because I was solicited by someone with some information indicating that perhaps this might not be the best transition for us. However, now we're getting the information that you provided with the timing that these other districts who had issues, knowing that it was a newer system that had some issues, knowing that those have been worked out, and then additionally, not to discount what someone from JPMs might have said, but I mean, they're potentially losing a contract, and they're going to speak more positively on their own behalf and not on the competitor. So, I feel like you have to take those suggestions and those little pieces of information that you get from the sources and consider the source and really kind of get down to the bottom of it. So, it sounds to me like we've vetted this, and I feel okay with it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Lawber?
Okay, so a question for you because I want to put it together with what she had said. I'm sorry, I don't remember your name. Ms. Kristi. Ms. Kastanza, she's, I don't know if she's on the body for LSBA. Do you know what school district she's from? Because they said hers was two years, and she said four years. So, I had talked to someone, obviously that's different from another district. And I understand people want to keep their contracts, but when it comes to someone saying TOPS money was lost for students, we do need to have the discussion to make sure that this isn't going to happen here. It's not to say, oh, this person's wanting to do this or that. It was, I could see through that, but when you start talking about TOPS, and a lot of our kids worked very hard for that, and I was very impressed with the top system when I moved to the state of Louisiana, because it wasn't based off of a financial need, it was based off of the academics of the student and the hard work that they put forward. And we don't want that to get lost. So, doing our due diligence to have the conversation about it, to be able to ask, you know, y'all, I wasn't saying y'all didn't do due diligence, it's just when something like that comes, we need to talk about it. And I didn't have it in committee to ask you, so I would have asked them. And that's what that is about. It's not to say this is because someone just said, well, they want to keep their contract. That's alarming when someone said TOPS. Outside of that, I would have been, it's very obvious what Ms. Buffy would have said if it was in that context.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further board discussion? So, I'd like to remind you that right now on the table, we have a motion and a second to table the item. So, I'm assuming we have to do a hand vote now. So, anyone, all those in favor of tabling the item, hand vote, please. Okay, all those in favor of not tabling the item? Mr. Wright? Motion, the motion to not table, the motion does not pass to favor of y'all. Sorry.
Did our teachers physically, like a few of them participate?
She mentioned they were.
Okay, so you had, you had certain teachers, were they from multiple grades?
We had, we had a nice array of stakeholders from teachers, elementary, we had an elementary administrator, a guidance secretary, guidance counselors, curriculum people, a high school teacher, a high school admin.
So, there was teachers in the mix?
Yes, yes. We had a committee, like, again, I am not too far out of the classroom. I wanted to make sure it was his part.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chauvin?
I'm sorry, I just have one thing to add. This was mentioned in the committee meeting, I just want to reiterate that we will take an entire school year to implement this new system. And so, we are going to take it slow and make sure that the transition happens successfully. And On Course has made it clear to us multiple times that they are committed to making this transition seamless as well as tailoring the system to meet our needs. And so, if we come across something over the course of that year that we would like to see in the system, and they have the ability to put it in place, that'll give them some time to develop, you know, the software to kind of meet our needs, especially when it comes to specific reports that we're looking for or specific assessments or things like that. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was, that that was stated, that it was organized in a small transition process. And we're not trying to make teachers have to do things twice, but I think doing, doing those, those actions in both systems will allow them to kind of see how things were done in the role of how it's going to be.
Thank you very much. So, I would like to thank Ms. Katie, Ms. Charpentier. Ms. Kristi, we do appreciate you. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to go back and read the item again. The item is to approve the highest scored, most responsive, and responsible vendor On Course for the student information management system and assessment platform for a five-year contract and a total cost of $1,245,813. We had a motion by Ms. Portina and a second by Ms. Wells. So, we're going to go ahead and at this time, we'll go ahead and vote. Motion passes. Item six, approval of land and facilities management committee recommendations as per meeting held April 19th, 2023. Mr. Du Planis?
Hey, to accept a change order request for Timpel Middle School to add one day to the contract due to implement what?
Motion by Ms. Du Planis, second by Ms. Portina. Any public comment? Any more discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes.
Item B, to accept a change order request for Timpel Middle School to stain and paint that competition gym floor.
Motion by Mr. Du Planis, second by Ms. Charpentier. Any public comment? Any more discussion? Yes, Ms. Wells?
What is the Lumina stock? Do we know?
Warriors.
Anyone else? Okay, let's vote. Motion passes.
Item C, to accept a change order request for security phase six at Sixth Ward Middle School.
Motion by Ms. Du Planis, second by Ms. Wells. Any public comment? Any more discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes.
Item D, to approve the low bid for Hurricane Ida repairs to La Rose Cavalcade Middle School.
Motion by Mr. Du Planis, second by Mr. Wright. Any public comment? Any more discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes.
Item E, to accept a change order request for La Rose Middle School for their re-roofing project.
Motion by Mr. Du Planis, second by Ms. Boujwa. Any public comment? More discussion? Let's vote.
Item F.
Motion passes?
Item F, to approve a change order request for WS LeFlore Elementary School to decrease the contract amount by $80,981.88 to delete and repair for T Buildings 4, 6, 7, 10, and 12.
Motion by Mr. Du Planis? I'm sorry. Second by Ms. Portina. Any public comment? Any more discussion? Okay, let's vote. Motion passes.
Item G, to approve the change order request for S, I'm sorry, WS LeFlore Elementary School to replace exterior light fixtures on building number two in the amount of $971.48.
Motion by Ms. Du Planis, second by Ms. Wells. Any public comment? Any more discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes.
To approve a change order request for Lockport Upper Elementary School to add $9,765 and five additional days to the contract to move furniture in and out of the classrooms in order to remove and replace the flooring.
Motion by Mr. Du Planis, second by Ms. Stroutmanier. Any public comment? Any more discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes.
Item A, to approve a change order request for Hurricane Ida repairs to South LeFrous High School to decrease the contract in the amount of $1,516,400.
Motion by Mr. Du Planis, second by Ms. Boujwa. Any public comment? Any more discussion? We have no trouble seconding those change orders. If not, we'll vote. Motion passes.
Item J, to approve the high bid in the amount of $4,010 annually from the Lance NACIO for hunting and fishing privileges on Section 16 Township 19th South, Range 20 East. Please tell me I'm saying this right. Punish him?
Yes.
But they'll have so.
Motion?
Motion, so move.
Okay, motion by Mr. Du Planis, second by Dr. Dion. Any public comment? Any more discussion? Okay, let's vote. Motion passes. Item seven, new business. A, to approve a change order request at TIP Central to add $8,073.66 to the contract to remove the existing Jip board sheeting and install new ice and mortar shield underlayment directly over a wood decking. Motion by Ms. Boujwa, second by Ms. Wells. Any public comment? Any more discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to explain why it's this new business. When the shingles were peeled off of the TIP building, there was an underlayment there that wasn't supposed to be there, and it didn't allow for the shingles that were there prior to be installed properly. And we certainly couldn't go back with tar paper and reinstall shingles on an improper substructure. This change order is to drive a building in to give the designer time to go back and redesign what the permanent repairs will look like. Many of you, because of Hurricane Ida, didn't know what the underside of a shingle roof should look like, and it's plywood. This is tongue and groove and not plywood. And then on top of the tongue and groove, there was this rubber like insulation in between that instead of tar paper. So, we're going to go back to design. Bob's in contact with the contractor and the design group to make sure that this is done properly. But what you're approving tonight is the drying of the building while this construction were on an unforeseen below-the-shingles problem that we didn't know existed is correct.
Any further board discussion? If not, we can go ahead and vote. Motion passes. Now, we do have a request to add an item to the agenda. Would you like to read the item, and then we'll go ahead and ask for a motion?
Madam President, I motion to add an item to the agenda being to accept a change order request for St. Charles Elementary School from Freetown Builders to add $67,522.94 to the contract to install the building pads slash foundation for the temporary modular building.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Du Planis. I need a second, Ms. Boujwa. Now, in order to add an item to the agenda, we do need to take a hand vote. So, all of those must be?
Potentially get Mr. Justin to explain why this function for the board.
Hello? This change order is to facilitate the installation of the building pads.
This change order is to, uh, facilitate the installation of the, uh, building pad, uh, that's gonna be required to set up the modular building. Um, we had, after procuring the modular building, they indicated that there was a requirement, uh, soil bearing capacity was required. Um, for the building was twenty-five hundred, uh, PSF. The geotechnical engineer that we had go out and assess the soils indicated, uh, that the soils did not meet that. So we had to design a pad, uh, to meet that requirement, uh, and have that installed into the project. They don't need this building, so, um, if you have any questions, I think this is.
Can we explain what, why this has to be taken action right now?
Well, uh, well, we're under tight time constraints to get this building in place, um, so that way teachers can move in, uh, prior to the start of school next, next week.
Ms. Barbara? What is the estimated date if we decide here today that it can be done, that it would be done?
Um, if it's decided, we have the contractor geared up, uh, to start, uh, as soon as possible.
But I'm, I'm asking when the completion date would be?
Of the pad, it's just a clear.
Uh, of everything. Like, if, if we don't pass it here and we have to wait till June or committee and then get to June, the beginning of June, what, how far back is that gonna push you?
It's gonna set everything back a month pretty much, so we wouldn't have the building set up and ready to go until maybe September.
We're trying to get it done before the school year starts.
Correct.
Thank you so much. Any further board discussion? So I'd like to remind you that the first vote is gonna be to add the item to the agenda. So we, I'm assuming a hand vote, okay? So hand vote, all of those in favor of adding the item to the agenda, please raise an aye.
Say yes.
Say yes for you. Okay, that would be eight for yes and one for no. Okay, well, I'm assuming you go, is, is your go to no? Okay, all right. So we do not add the item to the agenda. All right. And we'll go ahead and we'll move on to item nine.
It's not a knock, it's not unanimous?
It has to be unanimous to add an item to the agenda. So.
Because there's issues in our district that need to be repaired and.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and.
Well, she, she asked, I'm sorry.
If no one has the floor to speak right now.
I was on the call, I'm sorry.
Okay, so item nine.
I don't deserve that.
Excuse me?
I was answering her.
Item eight would be memorial resolutions. A is Evelyn Tucker, retired teacher, and that's Mr. Wright.
Evelyn Tucker, Ms. Evelyn Tucker was hired by the LaFouse Parish School District on August twenty-first, nineteen eighty-nine as a teacher at South Tibbetto Elementary School. Ms. Tucker retired from Tibbetto Elementary School on May twenty-second, two thousand, having served LaFouse Parish for a total of eleven years. Um, Ms. Tucker was my fourth grade teacher. Probably was a terrible student at the time. She was a great, she was a great teacher. Had her and Judy Uzay. I did about a lot there. Um, Ms. Uzay, I still stay in touch with. I have an after-school program she came to with me, Rain-Town Walmart recently. I saw Ms. Tucker probably a few years ago at Tiber Regional Wellness Center. She still recognized me. Um, she told me she, she wanted me to keep up with my story. She was proud of, and I was sorry to hear that she, that she passed away.
Ms. Fertina? And I taught with Ms. Tucker at, at Vansup Tibbetto. Uh, she joined the teaching force as a, a non-traditional student. She taught many years and was very.
Thank you.
And she kept those students alive.
Anyone else? Okay. B, Laurentia Dwaron, retired cust- custodian. Ms. Laurentia Dwaron was hired by the LaFouse Parish School District on November first, nineteen sixty-six as a custodian at Tibbetto High School. Ms. Dwaron retired on August thirty-first, nineteen eighty-four, having served the LaFouse Parish District for eighteen years.
I move that the, these resolutions be adopted by general consent and that a copy of these resolutions be recorded on a special page of our meeting book.
With no objections, let the refit reflect that these resolutions were adopted, adopted by general consent and will be recorded on a special page of our meeting book. Item nine is tentative dates for future meetings. And just a reminder, due to graduations, our committee meeting is gonna be moved back a week. So A, Policy and Academics Committee, Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. B, Business Committee, Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. C, Land and Facilities Management Committee, Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. And D, Regular Board Meeting, Wednesday, June seventh, twenty twenty-three. Ms. Fertina?
I just want to congratulate our, uh, graduates who will, because by the next board meeting, they will have exited our schools and I'm gonna wish them the very best in their future lives.
Thank you very much, Ms. Boujou.
I just want to wish everybody a happy, uh, Employee Appreciation Week. Uh, your, uh, letter was received by email today and your minutes should be in your campuses tomorrow.
Thank you for taking care of that for us. We really appreciate it.
Hope everybody had a great week.
Thank you so much. Okay, well, if that's all, we'll go ahead and roll the meeting.